I call this meeting to order at the regular session of the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee, county of Cochise, and state of Arizona to be held on Wednesday, July 5th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the Bisbee Municipal Building, 118 Arizona Street, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Cornado, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Anna Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hansen?
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis?
Here.
Mayor David Smith?
Present.
Councilmember Bill Higgins?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Douglas Dunn is excused. Councilmember Gabe Lindstrom?
Here.
City staff Ashley Cornado, city clerk; Carrie Bagley, finance director; Albert Ichave, police chief; Alda Ordunio, city attorney.
Thank you. For a moment of silence, I'd like, please, reflect on the disruptions and problems associated with all the wildfires that are going on throughout the nation, but particularly in the state of Arizona. And so if we could take just a minute in reflecting on the people and what we can do for assistance to them. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We actually have no proclamations tonight. I do want to indicate that I'm pulling agenda item number nine that had to do with purchase of a camera for Public Works, and it was pulled because of improper notice. And so we want to make sure that we, these items are noticed correctly. And so that has been pulled. And we have then called to the public, and we have Ms. Susan Blackford. Ms. Blackford?
Mr. Mayor, your response to my June 6th petition was in this article in The Observer. Well, I feel that I need to clarify my remarks made by you on me. Let's review some of the many facts. My information is coming from the city of Bisbee website, under documents. You need all to read this yourself, under the 1985 subdivision code. Under section 2.7, streets are defined. Streets, any existing or proposed street. Then it goes on, and then it ends with a sentence, "A street shown in a plat duly filed and recorded on the Cochise County Recorder's Office," which is a whole city of Bisbee. The comprehensive transportation plan is there as well. Then why does a mayor, Mr. Heradic and Mr. Ross, do not seem to me to read and understand the codes so that we do not have weeds? Mayor says it was followed. Weeds in the middle of the paved streets say no. Look at Bakersville and Saginaw, done to the city mag code with grant money. No weeds in the middle of their roads. A required independent certified testing as paving being done per mag was never done by Mr. Heradic. So how are we to really know? The mayor stated Mr. Heradic has design authority. Does that mean that any employee head can change the ordinance of oh, 1408 approved by the city in 2014 regarding the roads tax and approving the seven-year design plan that was made part of this ordinance, and we, as the voters, approve? Then, if so, what good is the council and the voters? If I am so wrong, Mr. Mayor, then prove to me and this community, as I stated before, please hire a certified road civil engineer to look at all the paved roads and why we are having weeds. What are you afraid of? I'm not afraid to have this done, Mr. Mayor. And, Mr. Mayor, I request of myself and several other people in this community, stop bullying this city in the committee into accepting bad roads or roundup. The right choice is to find out the real problem. Fact, weeds are the cause of bad paving. Fact, it will incur until this is correctly fixed per city mag regulations.
Thank you, Ms. Blackford. Going on to accounts payable?
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $612,949.09.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you.
I had a question.
Yes, I anticipated. I saw you there. Yeah, we just need to get that second out, and then we open up for questions. Yes, sir?
Well, one, I was just curious what the Cochise College, the one was, the big ones trigger, $2,800?
What's it under, please?
Tuition fees, general fund. Cochise College.
Is there a page number that you're looking at?
I just was wondering what it was.
Do we, do you, Ms. Bagley, do you? Thank you, ma'am.
That's probably tuition and books for the fire department employees that are, I'm working on paramedic, their paramedic classes.
Thank you.
And then, I don't know if it's time to ask this one now, or when it comes up, about the 1,500 for the retainer? Because I know we have more people coming in with resumes, correct?
We have two resumes from local people.
So what if a local person was to get it? What would happen to the retainer?
Are we in, I don't, I feel uncomfortable without...
I think you can address that when we get to that agenda item.
So we got to approve this, though?
It's already been paid.
It's already been paid, and what's happening in the agenda item is just a ratification. Nothing changes as far as the vote.
So what's the ratification, then? Because I've heard different things on that, too.
I can address that when we get to that agenda item, but it's really not related to the present budget. I mean, to what's before you right now. It's not going to change anything.
Anything else, sir? Okay. All those in favor of the accounts payable, paying accounts payable, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, signify same sign. No one opposed? That would be six and oh unanimous. Approval of the consent agenda. I'll read them. Item A. Approval of the minutes of the special session of mayor and council held on June 21st, 2017, at 6:00 PM. B. Approval to extend a public right-of-way use permit for lunches at Gore Park for Dan Maldonado for one year, effective July 5th, 2017 to July 5th, 2018. C. Approval of a park facility and right-of-way use permit for the Bisbee Vogue, Inc., for the use of various city streets, parking spaces, and staircases for the Bisbee 1,000 stair climb on Saturday, October 21st, 2017, from 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM. This includes setup and breakdown. D. Approval of a park facility and right-of-way use permit for the Bisbee Vogue, Inc., for the use of City Park for the Bisbee 1,000 stair climb on Saturday, October 21st, 2017, from 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM. E. Approval of a park facility and right-of-way use permit for the Bisbee Vogue, Inc., for the use of Gore Park for the Bisbee 1,000 stair climb on Saturday, October 21st, 2017, from 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM. F. Approval of a park facility and right-of-way use permit for the Bisbee Vogue, Inc., for the use of Grassy Park for the Bisbee 1,000 stair climb on Friday, October 20th, 2017, and Saturday, October 21st, 2017, from 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM, both days. G. Approval of a special event liquor license application submitted by the Bisbee Vogue, Inc., for an event to be held at Copper Queen Plaza Convention Center, parking lot closed per rent, Saturday, October 21st, 2017, from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Cynthia Conroy applicant. Do we have anybody that wishes to pull any items for further discussion?
I don't wish to, well, I don't really want to pull anything, but I do have a question.
Okay. Do we have anybody that wants to pull?
I'd like to pull items C, D, E, F, and G.
Okay. Items C, D, E, F, and G. So do we have, is your question related to any of those? All right. Could I have a motion to approve item A and B, please?
I move that we approve item A and B of the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor of approving items A and B of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Naye. Naye. Doesn't matter, but naye.
I'm sorry?
Naye.
Okay. So we have five, one. All right. Sir, ma'am?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions I'd like to ask. I don't see, Cynthia, Ken?
Who is the spokesperson, please? Hi. Would you introduce yourselves and your position with the organization?
My name's Laura Hughes. I'm on the board, and I'm also the race director.
Yes, ma'am.
Linda Moore, I'm on the board.
Thank you.
Ken Budge, board?
Yes, thank you.
Your first question?
Yeah, I had a couple. City Park, I looked at the application, and on your City Park application, the reason why you want City Park is because of music? That's what it said on the application. So could you clarify that for me? Just exactly what you mean by music?
We're looking to try to bring in some vendors, or some music. We play music during the race, right there on the course and throughout the day. Until we get the permits, we haven't set anything up yet, but that's the plan.
I'd like to add to that. Your permit from last year indicated exactly the same thing, and there was no music. The park was not used. So do we have something different this year? Quite honestly, I'm just, let me cut to the chase. We have been, I have been informed, and that it has been a, the position of Bisbee Vogue to reserve the parks so that no one else can use those on that particular day. So it's not to detract from the race and the events they're involved. And so there has been a number of citizens that have complained about that. And so there comes my question, because I have a couple of questions about a few of these other parks, certainly not about the event. It's just some of these outside things. And so if, you know, if the intent is to reserve these parks so that they can't be used by others, then I'm not sure that that is personally a valid situation. But that's why I'm asking. I had no idea that Mr. Higgins was going to ask about that. But I do have the permit from last year, and it indicates music, but there wasn't any, and so...
There was actually music at the start of the race, at the stairs, and in City Park as the runners came by. That was there and set up.
There was music on every staircase.
Not every staircase.
Well, on a lot of them.
Yes.
You know, we had people doing didgeridoo, violin players, this and that, on the staircase themselves. But in City Park, I think you had somebody up there beating a drum. And, you know, if you need the whole park for somebody to beat a drum, they could beat that drum almost anywhere. You know, I don't know exactly what you mean by music. I thought maybe you were going to have a dance or something, and, you know, invite the residents of Bisbee to come, or something like that. But just, you know, to want that park to beat on a drum, it seems like a little bit of an overreach to me.
Yeah, we continue to try to grow and try to do different things. I mean, last year, we had plans to use, you know, a bigger area in that Grassy Park, and it just kind of depends on vendors and us being able to plan for the music. We have plans for those events. We don't have specific details at this point, but we do want to use those areas for specific things.
Okay, that brings up my next question. Let me see. Gore Park. For Gore Park, your application said something about you wanted some kind of public health. Are you going to run a clinic in Gore Park? What are you going to do?
Again, last year, the plan was to get the health department to come down, take blood pressures. It's all part of the whole idea of being healthy and of the event itself. Do we need the whole park? No. But if we go set up and we don't have the control of the park, then we're not kicking anybody out or doing anything else. We're just going to use a small portion of it to set up some, a table. That's the plan, and to get somebody to take blood pressures and to answer questions and so on. Again, these things are all in the planning stage, and we would be a lot further along, but we put our applications in in March, and here it is still in July, and we're kind of getting behind the gun here, and, you know, wanting to make this happen. So that's part of the problem.
Okay. My other question is on Grassy Park. On Grassy Park, you were going to do a fundraiser for the restoration of one of our old fire engines, is that correct? And the fire engine is going to be parked where? On, right there on Main Street? Is that where it's going to be? I mean, what do you, how are you going to use the park to, you know, to raise funds for the, because it does state that, you know, the fire engine's going to be there?
Well, it would have to be on the street. Of course, it wouldn't be in the park, and then we would have a table in the park in order to get the money.
That'd be a police problem.
So that would be a...
Okay.
I mean, I guess this is my thing. This is 27 years that this has been going on. The last four have been the same. If there's complaints, we want to try to mitigate those. I'd ask the people to call us and let us know, and we'll try to, you know, help them out, whatever. It isn't, you know, it isn't a, it's the biggest event that happens. We're an event-driven city. You guys have said that at the last number of sessions, so, you know, that's, I don't quite understand. Do you think that people aren't allowed in the park because we have it? Or what is your problem with us having the park as our control, under our control?
In the past, they, that's the problem, Mr. Budge, is in the past, when those parks have been there, and other people attempt to do something, they've been informed that there is a permit there and that they are not allowed to do anything.
Yeah, well, they are, you know, we do have that at that point. What are they doing? I don't understand, I don't really know what that was.
Well, let me give you an example. What is forecast for Grassy Park is the Bisbee Council on Arts and Humanities is looking at specifically putting on an art and cultural event there on that Saturday, because there's going to be a number of people in town that typically leave fairly soon after the race, and that this would be an opportunity for them to see the arts and culture of Bisbee in that setting. And so that, you see, that would be an example, and particularly with Grassy Park, if you're going to have a fire engine parked in front of it on the street, then if we provide a permit to let you do that, but reserve the whole park, then that takes away the ability for a different group to showcase what they would like to do.
We'd be glad to give up part of the park. We don't need the whole park, and we don't have a way to apply. Okay, we want 10 square feet in one corner of the park. I mean, it's never, I've never seen that done in the eight years I've ever been here, so we just apply for the park. If other people want to apply, great, let's share and do whatever, but, you know, that's...
You don't even need a, you don't even need a permit if there's less than 50 people, you know, that are gathered at that location. So you're indicating for Grassy Park, all you need is room for a table?
At this point, yes.
Okay. Now, ma'am?
My question was, because I know that they always come and put in their permits early, early, and with them all being stamped as being received on March 16th, I'm wondering why we're just now hearing it four months later, or they're coming before us four months later.
Right. The city manager had, we had discussed originally that we would be, probably, we had a target date of June, early June, to have a change in all the fee structure, which, as you know, will be coming up to us in a month or so now. It's been put off. And so the reason was, is because this was one of the larger events, we wanted to get that new fee structure in place. So that was a decision by the then-city manager to hold that until we then found out that we wouldn't be able to get that into place until into August, probably, or even looking to have it effective September 1. And so it was decided that at that point, that it would be then brought forward so that these guys wouldn't have to wait any longer, and they could get the information out that they needed to get out.
Okay. Well, that, I mean, I, you know, hear what you're saying, but that really doesn't seem fair to the event organizers to hold their permits up so we can charge them more. That's my only, that just doesn't make sense to me.
Well, they, in fact, have been charged more. Some of the, some of the fees, they agreed were vastly underrated and needed to be brought up, so they have, in fact, agreed to those.
Okay. That was my question.
Okay. My question is the Beer Garden. The parking lot that you're asking for and that you've been given for the last couple of years for this? Pardon me?
Four years.
This will be the fifth.
Yes, yeah. Well, that parking lot is, in fact, pursuant to the settlement agreement, is, does not, it has 40 public parking spots that the settlement agreement says will be used as public parking spots 365 days a year. And so Mr. Reese, as an example, doesn't have the authority to allow you to use those parking lot, that parking lot as you have the last four years, for that Beer Garden, because it's not his to give.
Part of the agreement was that they control the parking lot, but they have to leave the parking places free, correct?
And how would, yes, sir, I'm quite familiar, and I've discussed it with legal.
Right. And so I guess my question back to you is, for four years, it's gone this way. Sonora Fest, you, the city tied it up for two entire days. The coaster races, if you let me finish, the coaster races had it last Sunday, or the day before yesterday. So it's not a real change in policy that we've had. All of a sudden, this is a whole new change in policy, is, it just surfaced, or I don't quite understand.
Yeah, well, what has happened is because there's been some recent disputes about parking, and so it has been more closely researched, and that information has, in fact, come out, that it has erroneously been provided for the last four years.
So when Pride had theirs in there, and everybody else has used it, it's been incorrect, is what you're...
That's correct.
So now you want to correct it at this point. Would you be satisfied if we provided 40 free spaces elsewhere?
Would I? I don't know. You're acting like this is me.
Well, it's your ability to give us the permit or not for the liquor license.
It's the council, yes.
Yeah, the council. So if we provided 40 spots free in the paved lot, would that, would that be equal to the same thing if we wanted to do that?
It perhaps would, but then we'd have to table this item until we got that assurance and that information from Mr. Reese indicating that that would happen. So I'm simply stating that, as, you know, and you did mention the coaster races and so forth, that was a period of a couple hours, and...
So hours make a difference?
As opposed to a full day? Yes, sir, it would.
In the contract, it says 365 days, but only 22 hours, not 24 hours. Is that what you're...
Mr. Budge, are you arguing with me, sir?
Well, what I'm trying to say is, this is arbitrary and capricious, that you will pick and choose that one's okay because it's for a short amount of time, and another one is okay because it's not okay because it's a longer time.
I see.
And our attorney has advised us that that would be an arbitrary and capricious determination to say one is okay and one is not based on hours.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions? I have nothing further. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to take this individually? Item, item number C. I'm sorry.
I was just going to make a motion for it, but if you're going to do it individually, then go ahead.
Item C. Approval of a park facility and right-of-way use permit for Bisbee Vogue for the use of various city streets, parking spaces, and staircases for the Bisbee 1,000 stair climb on Saturday, October 21st, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, 5:00 AM, 8:00 PM. This includes setup and breakdown. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
We need a motion in a second, correct?
Sure.
Okay.
If you want, if you want to get technical.
Okay. If that's your motion, I will second it.
All those in favor, state aye.
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 Opposed?
Naye.
Motion carried five to one. D. Approval of park facility and right-of-way use permit for the Bisbee Vogue, Inc., for the use of City Park for the Bisbee 1,000 stair climb on Saturday, October 21st, 2017, from 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
So I just had a quick question. If somebody, like somebody else wanted a part of the permit, we're okay giving, like he was saying, breaking part of it up. This isn't solidifying one person, correct?
It's giving them a permit. These are City Parks, so people still have the right to use City Parks, no matter what.
Well, I get that, if somebody else wants a permit.
Yeah. It would, depending on what they want to do, and that's the vagueness of what we're talking about.
But it sounds like they wouldn't have an issue if somebody else wanted to use Grassy Park, or, right?
We're talking about City Park, so... Any questions? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed?
Naye.
Naye. Ms. Cornado?
Three to three?
I believe it's three to three. So the motion fails. Approval, item E. Approval of a park facility and right-of-way use permit for the Bisbee Vogue for the use of Gore Park for the Bisbee 1,000 stair climb on Saturday, October 21st, 2017, from 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of the motion state aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Naye.
That would be five to one for the motion. Approval of a park facility and right-of-way use permit for the Bisbee Vogue, Inc., for the use of Grassy Park for the Bisbee 1,000 stair climb on Friday, October 20th, 2017, and Saturday... two thousand seventeen, and Saturday, October twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, from five A.M. to eight P.M., both days. And as I understand it, this is the one that you only need space, you don't need the park?
You need space for the fire and help.
I didn't understand.
Fire and set up for help analysis, if we can get that set up?
No, we're...
Grassy park.
Grassy park, sir. You were talking about that for Gore Park.
Okay. I thought I was talking grassy.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor of the right-of-way use permit for grassy park, state aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Three to three?
I thought it was...
I said nay.
You said nay?
Yeah.
You said aye?
Yeah.
So, it's three, three to three.
Oh, you said nay, too. Okay.
Motion fails. G, approval of a special event liquor license application submitted by Bisbee Vogue, Inc. for an event to be held at Copper Queen Plaza Convention Center parking lot, Saturday, October twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, from one P.M. to six P.M., Cynthia Conroy applicant. I move that we table this, allowing them to bring forward a assurance that forty parking spots will be held in the pay parking lot, at no cost to the city or the parkers. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Motion carried four to two. Old Business, number three. Ratification pursuant to A.R.S. thirty-eight dash four thirty-one dash oh five of actions taken on June twenty-first, two thousand seventeen. The purpose of this item is to validate an earlier action by the mayor and council regarding entering into a contract with Interim Public Management, LLC, for interim city manager and to authorize the retainer fee of fifteen hundred dollars and to allow Mayor Smith to sign the retainer letter. Ms. Ordunio?
I can clarify this. Basically, what happened at the last meeting when this was originally approved, it was not noticed for a vote, it was noticed only as discussion and possible recommendation. So, we didn't give the community enough time as far as our notice requirements go. So, by law, we had to bring it back for ratification by council, but it doesn't really change the fact that the vote had already approved the contract, and the city took action on that. So, this is just a procedural mechanism to allow council to basically make the vote legal. So, that's why we have to bring it back to you all.
Mr. Lindstrom, we have questions.
So, it's legal that we paid it even though it wasn't, because we already paid it, correct?
Right. And it's a binding contract. It's not like we can take it back.
Technically, it was wrong to pay it.
It, not to the extent that you voted for it. The problem was in the way we noticed the agenda item.
Well, I didn't vote for it, but I know the council did, but...
The collective you, not you, Mr. Councilmember Lindstrom.
Just pointing it out. It just seems wrong that we paid it already when it wasn't even, didn't go through correctly, but, I mean, I'm new to this, so, just, I don't know.
Procedurally, it happens, but we, so that's why we have to bring it back for ratification, just to make it proper.
And like I said, what happens when we have, if, so, we also, that same day, we said there's going to be three resumes.
Right.
Up to three, sir.
Well, we said...
No, sir, up to three.
Like, from that company?
Yes, sir, up to three.
And we never said anything about local resumes coming in?
Yes, we did. You asked specifically...
Yeah, I asked for it, but we didn't get it.
You asked specifically if people could, if this was it, or if other people could apply, and my answer was, of course, other people can apply, and we've received two local resumes since then.
So, what happens if a local one is selected?
It's still a binding contract, so you're still bound to pay that company.
We're still paying the fifteen hundred dollars.
Right.
That's kind of my point, is it's a waste of fifteen hundred if we pick a local. So, that's all.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move to ratify the following action taken at the June twenty-first, two thousand seventeen council meeting, entering into a contract with Interim Public Management, LLC, for an interim city manager and to authorize a retainer fee of fifteen hundred dollars and to allow Mayor Smith to sign the retainer letter.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cornata?
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Nay.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes five to one. Number four, Mr. Green?
Yeah.
Welcome back to Bisbee.
Hey, thanks.
And we held this, I held this item for you, so...
Thanks for doing that.
I wanted you to give us your three minutes.
Yeah. My name's Richard Green, I live in Old Bisbee, and I'm going to talk about climate change. The first thing to do to stop climate change is to stop financing it. The second-to-the-last city manager and the former finance director, despite our warnings, decided to bank with Wells Fargo, who finances dangerous fossil fuel development like tar sands through the Dakota Access Pipeline. Not only that, but Wells Fargo was fined one hundred and eighty-five million dollars for setting up thousands of ghost accounts, basically stealing people's IDs to overcharge them. Unfortunately, nobody went to jail. According to the city, they chose Wells Fargo because they have the best rates. However, it was unclear what specific rates are better. According to the city, Wells Fargo offers sweeps, and if I'm not mistaken, sweeps are direct deposits and withdrawals for employees, and that the other banks don't offer that. But, I spoke with Marshall O'Donnell, the manager of Western Bank, and Western Bank's a more local bank, and she said they do offer sweeps and fraud protections, and she can send another proposal if she gets a request from the city. Mayor Ron Ortl did sign the U.S. Mayor's Convention on Climate Change, but as far as I know, never implemented a plan to keep track and reduce energy consumption and emissions, something that could be done if mayor and council signs on to the Paris Agreement, which now has over three hundred and thirty mayoral signatures. I urge the council and citizens to check out a grant program called the American Cities Arizona and Bisbee is in a unique position of having so much to lose in terms of extreme heat waves and deaths from overheating and raging forest fires that has a connection to climate change and global warming. The loss of productivity, cooling costs, on one hand, and has much to gain in renewable energy jobs and a boom in solar potential, savings and clean energy bills and cleaner air. And I urge everybody to start to divest from Wall Street banks that keep us locked in an unsustainable and polluting energy system, and to start investing in local banking and clean energy productions. And I also encourage people to check out, once again, ArcadiaPower.com. They basically deal in renewable energy credits. So, basically, they take your money, they invest in renewable energy programs, and pay your electric bill through the power company here. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Green. So, the bottom line is you're asking the mayor and council to sign the Paris Agreement?
Correct, just like the other mayors did.
I'm reckoning back to your original petition.
Correct.
And that's what it was.
Yeah, and I don't...
The information you just gave us is backup information as to why we should do that.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
That has nothing to do with the banking. That's two different things, correct?
Well, see, it's connected, it's all connected. It's one, one way the city could divest in dishonest business practices primarily, because they're, A, ripping people off...
But that does not do with the Paris thing.
Well, it does indirectly, because they're financing dangerous fossil fuel developments that cause climate change.
Thank you, sir. I will state that I had discussions with the city manager and Ms. Bagley, specific about banks, and the information about sweep accounts and so forth was correct, but it was somewhat in the past, and so, because of the budget that has just gone through and because of other matters, it's been a little busy for finance. But, I can assure you that finance will, at my request, they will be checking for some local banks to see if they can, in fact, service us with the requirements that we need at a price that we can afford. So, that part is being taken care of, Mr. Green, I can assure you of that. Okay? Now, as far as, what's the council's wishes on the, Mr. Higgins?
Anything? Yeah, I understand the sentiment, Mr. Green, and I absolutely do, and, you know, I took a look at that, and, well, first of all, first starters, the Paris Agreements are voluntary. They were voluntary, it was a voluntary agreement, there was no teeth in it whatsoever, and most climate activists at the time said it was just symbolic, that it had no real meaning because it really wasn't doing anything to reduce the carbon emissions that needed to be done, to stave off, you know, these disastrous climate change things, which, you know, they're predicting. And so, you know, the original agreement had no teeth. And the mayor's council, they got together, is also largely a symbolic group. They, what they're doing is voluntary, and it's, you know, it's more of a political statement than anything else. So, basically, what you would be asking us to do is to make a political statement. Is that correct?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah.
If you can't set up, if the council... And if the city can't set up a plan to reduce its emissions or to find grants to build solar panels, to basically, to have a plan in place, then, then symbolically, then that's the best that we could hope for. I mean, the mayor Ortl did sign the climate convention, the U.S. Mayor's Climate Convention, which is mostly symbolic, and a lot of, a lot of what they said they would do, they haven't done, but that doesn't mean that they couldn't start to do that.
Thank you, Richard.
Sure. Thank you, sir.
Well, you know, I have a reluctance, on the one hand, to get the city of Bisbee involved in, you know, what are really just political statements, because this is the state of Arizona, would be the first city to do this, I'm pretty sure, other than Phoenix. I think Phoenix has signed on...
Tucson.
And Tucson, I think, pardon me?
Tucson.
Yeah. Tucson also, Tucson and Phoenix. So, we would be like the third city to actually do this. Pardon me, sir?
Scottsdale, I understand.
Okay.
Scottsdale, that's what he said.
Oh, Scottsdale. Oh, thank you. Yeah, so, you know, it's up to the wishes of the council. I, if we want to make a, you know, a symbolic gesture, I don't see where it hurt anything.
Thank you. Just as a point in fact, because newer people don't, don't, will hear what you just said and not understand what actually we have been doing, and we have a very large solar farm, if you will, at wastewater treatment, which is cutting the bill down tremendously for the citizens of Bisbee. We also are actively recharging through, again, the sewer treatment plant. We're putting out, in the area of nine hundred thousand gallons a day that are being recharged. So, we are doing things. I just, bringing that up because I want people to understand that things are being done and that Bisbee is, is moving in that direction, so. Counsel, do we have...
I would say that I feel that it is important to make a statement about the climate change, and that symbolism is important, especially in this day and age.
Okay.
Is it necessary to, where past Mayor Ortl signed this, would it be necessary to sign?
It's a different, it's a different agreement.
It's a different agreement, okay.
Yes, yes. And that was eight years ago. Yeah.
May I interject really quick? The way this item was noticed was for discussion and possible direction to staff. So, other than that, any formal vote would have to wait.
Right. And what we're really discussing is asking staff to draft a document that would be coming back to us for us to vote on and then have signed.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Klein? Anything?
No.
Okay. Mr. Lindstrom? All right. Then, I would like to direct staff...
I still have a comment.
Well, okay.
I think it's a good idea, but I'd like to go one step further, and I would like to see a plan of some sort that would incorporate these type of things when we're looking at different projects and so on. For instance, for, we do it for sustainability. I think when we start looking for banks, when we start looking for ways to, or projects for lighting or so on, that we take these into consideration.
Take what into consideration?
The, the climate change.
The Paris Accord?
The Paris Agreement.
Well, okay, but then, you have to have one in order to then decide if we're going to take it into, we have to see what it is.
Well, I know, but I'm just, I'm just saying that as a, to take it further, that once we do that, that we start looking at that.
You're talking about in the future, after we get...
In the future, yes.
Got it. Okay. I would like to direct staff, please, to prepare a document to bring back to council for our consideration and input and potential ratification. Okay, we're going to move on to new business. Item number five, discussion and possible approval of a public auction for the transfer of certain city property located at east of twenty-seven Wood Canyon and the establishment of a minimum bid price. Mr. Joe Ward, building and zoning inspector. Good evening, sir.
Mayor, council. They say, they always say it's better to ask forgiveness than permission. I have to ask both tonight. I put the, I advertised this auction back, you know, it has to be like thirty days ahead of time, minimum, and that, and I established a price on it without you guys establishing the price on it. Hopefully, we'll see the same. If not, then the auction can't go forward, but that's my fault. So, what I had done was, this needs to be also a public hearing for this also, but the, what I did was, I had established a price at ninety cents a square foot, which has been kind of a going price we've been using for steep, this is very steep land, and it's landlocked, and it doesn't do us a lot of good, and I think it would, it would be helpful for us to auction the property off. And I think ninety cents a square foot is an equitable price for it. The Planning and Zoning Commission agreed with me.
All right. Do we, do we have counsel input on the price?
It seems like it is a fair price for that type of property.
It seems like I have no basis to judge it from, and so, I go totally, as to what our staff says it's worth.
There you go. There you go.
You're up, Mr. Higgins.
I was just going to move to authorize a public auction for the sale of designated surplus city property located adjacent to and east of twenty-seven Wood Canyon, instead of minimum bid price of ninety cents per square...
instead of minimum bid price of 90 cents per square foot for this property.
I'm afraid that we probably need to open a...
Pardon me?
Public...
No, that's the next item. We have to establish the price. You're okay, you're good, sir, but we have to establish the price, then we'll sell it. Second. It's all right. Okay, do we have a...
I second.
And you have a second? All right. Ms. Cornado, would you?
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number six, public auction of designated surplus property located adjacent to 27 Wood Canyon. Now, this is a public hearing then. So I will open the public hearing and ask for, is anybody wish to speak in favor of auctioning this property? Or, do we, pardon me, I'm asking for a minimum bid of...
So here bid.
Let me hear it first. I knew you guys were getting a little antsy here, I knew what was going on.
At 90 cents a square foot?
Yes, sir.
It came to $9,245 for this property.
$9,245.
So here bid.
All right, we have a bid for $9,245. Do we have any further bids? Do we have any further bids? Do we have any further bids? The property is sold for $9,245.
Thank you, council, thank you, Joe.
I now close the public hearing. Item number seven, discussion of possible approval of an additional one-year agreement with CEGO AAA for the provision of $28,000 in support of the Bisbee bus. Ms. Bagley?
Mayor and council, this is basically to accept a $28,000 grant from CEGO for assistance with operation of the bus.
Does anyone have any questions, Ms. Bagley?
No.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the one, additional one-year agreement with CEGO AAA for the provision of $28,000 in support of the Bisbee bus.
I second.
Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. And because it's a, did you, did you have, okay. I'm going to ask Ms. Cornado for a roll call vote, because this is an intergovernmental agreement.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously, six oh. Okay, discussion of possible approval to accept $5,000 grant from Arizona State Library Archives and Public Records for the health collection by CCHA, and we have Ms. Allison Williams from our library staff.
Thank you, mayor, council, and city staff. The, this is a cap grant from the Arizona State Library. This is the name that they've put on it from the grant that we wrote. The grant is actually for the Copper Queen Libraries to update and expand the permanent collection of medical, health, and wellness collection in all areas and age groups with targeting early learners, first learners of literacy and reading, in multiple pertinent sections as it relates to health, wellness, and medical. And our goal is $10,000, so we are halfway there. A portion of this grant will also go towards programming with workshops, lectures, and classes.
Thank you, ma'am, any questions? Thank you, ma'am, do we have a motion?
I move to approve, to approve and accept a $5,000 grant from the Arizona State Library Archives and Public Records for the health collection for the Copper Queen Library.
A second.
Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. And all those in favor of accepting the $5,000 grant, please state aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Hearing done, six and zero, motion carried unanimously.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may have you go back to agenda item number six, we actually need somebody to move to accept the bid, and we need a vote from all members.
Thank you. Moving right along, back to item six. I need a motion to accept the bid as stated.
I move that we accept the bid as stated.
Second. All those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, and thank you for my correction. Thank you. Item number 10, discussion of possible approval of a contract for publishing services and official news, and official newspaper of record. Ms. Cornado?
Good evening. Before you tonight is the annual contract for our newspaper of record. We're required to do this for all of our publishing needs, public notices, bids, and things like that. We received one bid from the Bisbee Observer, and their price is $3.10 per column inch, per publication.
Okay. And that was noticed, and so others had the opportunity?
It was noticed on our website for 14 days.
You bet, I was just trying to get that out into the public to make sure that they understood that. All right, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the contract for publishing services, official newspaper of record with the Observer.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Those in, it's a contract, let's do a roll call, thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number 11, city managers' report, we have no report. This takes us immediately to a motion from Mr. Higgins.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
We have a motion, we have a second, to my surprise. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously, thank you. Thanks, folks, for coming.